Baker waddling in.
Good morning. My call to order, the recess meeting of July the 9th, 2025. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Will not be with us today.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Here. Imocation and pledge to be conducted by Commissioner Highlander. If all please rise.
It is my honor and privilege to introduce the very Reverend David Carter. And I've asked Father Carter, in his plea to the Lord, to give a special prayer for Commissioner Shipley and his wife. And I'll leave the pledge following.
Father. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. We stand before you, Almighty God, conscious of our sinfulness, but aware that we gather in your name, come to us, remain with us, and enlighten our hearts. We ask you to especially be with Dee Dee Shipley and Commissioner Shipley as they struggle in this time of illness, that you might comfort them. Give us, in our deliberations today, light and strength to know your will, to make it our own and to live it in our lives. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power, for you are God. You desire justice for all, enable us to uphold the rights of others, do not allow us to be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather in your name, may we temper justice with love, so that all our decisions may be pleasing to you and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants. You live and reign with the Father and the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Highlander. Madam Clerk, I am showing one item on the recess agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. This is the same item that we've been discussing for a couple of months with about Zoll. And we're still waiting, I guess, County Attorney, we're still waiting, and that should be finished in the next two weeks, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So without objection, can we move this to the 7:30, 2025 recessed agenda? Okay. So 7:30? Okay. All right, with that, we'll adjourn recess meeting, we'll go to agenda session, so Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Chauncey?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley absent. Commissioner Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Here.
We have no presentations today, so with that, we'll be looking at entering minutes for recess meeting in June the 25th, 2025. Agenda session, June 25th, 2025, and the regular meeting on July the 2nd, 2025. We'll also be looking at entering one report into the record next week. With that, we'll move into resolutions. First resolution, 725-10. So Madam Clerk, could you read the captions?
Resolution 725-10, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected, and the oaths of deputy sheriffs.
Okay, so no lights, no one standing for comment, we'll take this up next week. 725-11.
Resolution 725-11, a resolution to reappoint two members to the Citizens Advisory Board for Recreation for a two-year term, beginning July 16, 2025, and ending July 16, 2027. This will reappoint Joe Legee and Cora Taylor.
Okay. So no lights for comment, no one standing for comment, we'll take this up next week, 725-12.
Resolution 725-12, a resolution to appoint a regular member to the Hamilton County Industrial Development Board to fill the unexpired term of Sylvester Harris. This will appoint Ruben M. Taylor.
Okay. So no lights for comment, no one standing for comment, we'll take this up next week, so 725-13.
Resolution 725-13, a resolution approving the deviation from the county's discretionary funds policy as to the appropriating of funds to the nonprofit organization, United Action Alliance, as made by the Commissioner from the 5th District in the amount of $1,419.29.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck.
Mr. Chairman, this is just housekeeping. According to our audit, we need to put this in the right category, so we'll be dealing with that next week.
Okay. Don't see any lights. Mr. McCullough?
Yes, during our audit, we found that the expenditures of $1,019.
Ms. was reimbursed to the Commissioner in District 5 in FY24. The cost was directly related to a nonprofit event, and these expenditures do not qualify under the tribal discretionary fund. Therefore, they should not have been reimbursed. So in the FY24, the organization was gave $3,500 from District 5 discretionary funds. And so if additional funds needed to be approved, they needed to be approved by a resolution before reimbursement or before even dispersed to a nonprofit organization. So this is a clear violation of the laws.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, this program is under our auspices, the county auspices. They didn't have, they didn't, they were sponsored. This program is sponsored, but it's also in our budget. So in order to get the accommodation for the people who were the entertainers for the program, for the outreach program, it would have been cumbersome for me to try to come back through the county commission and get the commission to approve funds to go to the United Community Action Alliance and then have them to pay for this accommodation. So I did it, yeah, we did it, and that's what the deviation is all about, but we should be able to get it right now.
Okay, Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, apparently there are new, I mean, everybody wanted to play by the rules, don't get me wrong. Everybody wanted to adhere and be open and whatnot, but something has changed. And it used to be that if a commissioner had a project or wanted to spend money in a district, they just spent it. They didn't even, we didn't even bring it before the commission, we just went to the administrator of the office, told them what we needed. It would go through finance and case closed. But I see the audit guy down there. Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, we can vote on it, Mr. Chair, next week.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we'll take this up next week, I see no more lights, no one standing for comment, so we'll take this up next week. 725-14.
Resolution 725-14, a resolution to confirm the appointment by the county mayor of Rebecca Bohannon as Administrator of the Hamilton County Health and Social Services Division.
County Mayor?
Chairman. I'm really excited about this appointment. That's a person that you all are familiar with. And we can, as we have a conversation here and over the next week, certainly invite you to ask both Chief Roddy and Sandra Ellis about the long, thorough process that led to the decision to appoint Becca Bohannon as the Administrator of the Health Department. Becca, who I've known as first the leader of Mental Health Court and the first director of Mental Health Court after it was started in this county, and then in a role that we promoted her into to oversee our accountability courts and opioid efforts. Is a very dynamic leader, hands-on leader, has the trust of county employees across offices and departments. Frankly, I was somewhat surprised to see her name in the application pile in a long-protracted process that involved a national search firm that is already, that is working on behalf of the medical examiner's office, but that contract, which HR worked with the medical examiner's office on, allowed the county to also post a few other hard-to-fill positions. And we decided to cast a wide net, right? There were no front runners, if you will, there were no folks when we started this process who we had an eye on internally or even in our community. We wanted to find the very best person we could. I would say in that way, it's much like the park search that we had, we did a national park search, we didn't have a firm involved. But a national park search that led us to Matt Foles, who unequivocally was the best candidate. And I think we found the best candidate again. Becca is much more capable to talk about her vision and her background than I am. But before she came to the county, before Mayor Coppinger appointed her to lead Mental Health Court, she served for a decade at a nonprofit, served in a variety of roles, and ultimately led that nonprofit and led quite a large nonprofit team. And again, has earned the trust of all the judges in our community and many across the sheriff's office and county general government. And I was blown away, as I've shared with many of you, blown away by her clarity, focus, vision for public health in our community. She's got a sense based on her mental health background, she's a licensed mental health therapist in the state of Tennessee. She's exceptionally qualified, given the current state and challenges in public health, has a master's degree from UTC in mental health. And as a practitioner and a leader in government, has a sense of where public health ought to be focused, where we should continue to meet statutory requirements, and then cast vision for our community from nutrition to mental health and complications that we face today. And I'm sensitive to these as a parent of young children around screen time and things that 10 years ago might not have been on the radar of public health leaders. One of the reasons that we are thrilled, I say we, speaking on behalf of Chief Roddy, thrilled about this appointment and the process that we've been through is that after Chief Roddy had the good sense to try to convince Sonya Calvin to take an interim position, she has handled that job so well. It's one of the reasons that we took our time, right? And I think normally we would have tried to fill this position within a month or two. We were in no hurry, based on Sonya's leadership, the trust that those at the Health Department have given her. And she was a heck of a partner through what's been a tough time at the Health Department and a time of, but it's also an exciting time, a time of transition at the Health Department. And in the weeks ahead, we're going to share more about Sonya's longtime, long-term, excuse me, long-term leadership role, looking forward at the Health Department. But I have no doubt with Becca's vision, background as a practitioner, background in county government, she's going to serve very well, but have even greater confidence knowing that she's going to have Sonya Calvin at her side. And so with that, you know, open it up to any questions. But this is the first administrator in almost three years that I've had the opportunity to appoint. That is frankly a result of us having extremely talented people who have, fortunately for me and for y'all, have remained in these positions. And I regularly make sure I look Lee and Todd and Sandra and Christie in the eye and make sure they're not getting any crazy retirement ideas, because I don't really want to make another administrator appointment. But this one, we feel incredibly confident about and hopeful, optimistic about the future of the Health Department.
Chief? Do you want to talk about the process? I guess you were kind of led to process the.
I was a partner in the process, Chairman, with Ms. Ellis from Human Resources. So I'll give you my general recollection of it, but if we're going to need specifics like duration and things like that. So when we knew we were going to need to replace the leadership, top leadership position within the Health Department, we also knew that was potentially going to be a difficult one to do, and we wanted to do our due diligence. At the time, as Mayor Womp referenced, we had an open contract with a standing external vendor that Ms. Ellis can speak to greater than I can, but we had already paid for that contracted services to help us fill some positions within the Health Department, which has historically been difficult to not only recruit, but find viable candidates for those positions that are medically related. The contract reads a little deeper than that, but that's the gist of it. We did have multiple positions that we could use in that contract as a result of the initial implementation to fill those physicians' positions within the Health Department. Upon some research, the conditions of the contract allowed us to use this external vendor in line.
Is that correct?
In-line group to conduct the external recruiting and search for candidates. And the Health Department Administrator met those parameters, so we asked them to assist us in that search. Over the course of that's what it feels like, between 3 and 4 is about as specific as we can get sitting here. We had an open search for those candidates. Once the candidates' applications came in, some internal, some external, we began the vetting process, and by we, her and her team did all the work, I just got the emails at that point, to find viable candidates to fill this position. Once we reached that next level of review, which would have been the first interview phase, we scheduled interviews with several candidates. We had a standard formalized interview process. We did have one external member from the community who has an extreme deep background in public, or excuse me, in healthcare, who assisted us in that interview panel. Upon completion of the interviews, we reviewed the needs, the scores, how we felt as an interview team. And the ultimate top two candidates that we saw were Ms. Bohannon and another external candidate from another state. We submitted those names to Mayor Womp for his one-on-one interview. And at the end of that, we were all very confident in the selection of Ms. Bohannon for this position, sir.
Okay. All right. Ms. Ellis, anything you want to add?
I think Chief Roddy did a great job there. I would basically just say that what he covered is exactly what we did. We did use the in-line group, we already had them contracted for the medical examiner's office. And within that agreement, we have up to five additional positions that we could post for, using that firm. So again, we utilized it for this, we're actually utilizing it now for homeless healthcare physicians. Again, hard to find candidates for certain positions within the county. So they've done a great job with this. 100% certain that Becca is the right choice here. As Chief Roddy said, I was involved in the interview process, and I think she's going to be the best candidate.
Okay. All right, do have some lights, Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Bohannon, I appreciate your interest in the job. You've done a great, great work for Hamilton County, and I appreciate everything you've done. This is kind of new to me, I've not reviewed this as much as I'd like to, and of course, I will over the course of the next week. I really don't have any questions for you specifically. I guess my first question was, is this a new position? So this is not a new position, Mayor?
This is the Administrator of the Health Department.
Okay. So I've got a list of other questions, but I think the one that I think is most pertinent is, well, I'll just read this, this is from CTAAS's website. It says here, unlike the Board of Health, the County Health Department is a required agency. It is to be headed by the County Health Director, which I'm assuming that's this position? Is that right?
I'm not familiar with the exact guidance that you're reading. We have a county physician, which is a different position than the Administrator of the Health Department.
Okay, yeah, I'm familiar with that. So it goes on, it says, it is to be headed by the County Health Director or Administrator, maybe those words are interchangeable. And then it goes on to say, who is appointed by the Commissioner of Health and is compensated at least in part by the state. The Commissioner also appoints the County Health Officer, who must be a physician. If the County Health Director is a physician, he or she may also serve as the County Health Officer. And that's TCA 682603. So I guess my question is like, do we actually have the authority to even appoint this position? I'm not confident in that. Maybe we should have some research done, I don't know if our attorney has any information on that, but it appears to me this may be outside our scope of authority.
I can look into that briefly.
I know the county physician or that title has changed post, clarifications around public health have changed post-COVID as the state legislature's revisited public health across the state. That position is a position that is co-appointed by the Commissioner of Health and the County Mayor, ultimately by the Commissioner at the recommendation of the County Mayor. This position, the Administrator of the Health Department, is a position that is.
Yeah, I can address that, Commissioner Sharp. You are correct that Commissioner Avaradi does appoint that, but with us being a metro, the County Mayor can make that appointment. And once that appointment is made, we'll have to submit that to Commissioner Avaradi, who will normally approve it if we've approved it here. And also, it is referred to as a County Director through Tennessee Department of Health. But as you know, some of our positions don't translate with the state position. So here in the county, it's considered an administrator. But Tennessee Department of Health considered it as a director position. Does that help?
Well, I mean, it answers the title part of the question. I'm not sure about the authority part of the question. I'm not sure where we would find that, because we reference CTAAS a lot here in these meetings. And it appears, I mean, I'm no attorney, that's caveat here, and I'm no attorney. So I can't give legal advice, but I mean, from a layman, it appears that we don't have the authority to appoint this position and that it should come from the Commissioner of Health, as stated here in CTAAS's own material. I sent that to everyone here on the commission to review. So but before we move forward with this, I would like to get some clarity from the Commissioner of Health, just to make sure that we're inside our authority.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this may be premature, let me just hold off on my thanks to Ms. Calvin for the work she's done since that position has been vacant. I understand before that positions, whoever held that position the last time, we had a lot of problems with it, and since Ms. Calvin been there, the problems have ceased. So I just thank you. And I'll have more to say about that when we get this all solved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Beck? All right. See no more lights. Any further questions from the board? Or we're waiting, I guess, for Attorney Varnell?
I can get an answer.
Okay. All right, so if you would, circle back with the commission, with, thank you, all right, thank you. Okay, we would take this up next week. That is all of the committee as a whole, we do have, Finance Committee has nine items, looks like, on the resolution. Buildings and Economic Development has one item, and then Roads and Zoning has one item. And I guess how we will proceed after the meeting is, we will begin with Roads and Zoning, is that okay with you? Mr. Chauncey? Okay. Then we will go to Building and Economics, has one items, and then we'll finish with the nine items with Finance immediately following this agenda meeting. With that, we'll move into announcements, Commissioner Baker?
No announcements, just wishing the best for Dee Dee.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair, we stand in support of the Commissioner from Saudi Dacey, thank you.
Commissioner Beck?
No announcements.
Commissioner Sharp?
No announcements, Chairman. I would like to express my concern and best wishes for the Shipley family. They'll be top of the Sharp's Prayer list, thank you.
Commissioner Chauncey? Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman, I will say I did speak as Commissioner Shipley this morning, and he did give his permission and actually requested prayer from all of us. So thank you all for doing that, thank you, Father, for your prayer.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I too want to keep the Graham family, we'll keep Geno Shipley and Dee Dee in our prayers and hope for the best and pray that God will wrap His arms around that family and do some really good. We're praying for a, I think I told you all last week, that Joe Haley on Lookout Mountain, he lost his wife, well, he buried her yesterday, and so keep the Haley family in your prayers. Also, today, I'm joined with the mayor of Lookout Mountain, Walker Jones, he's here to see that I'm doing a good job for him, I guess, I don't know, but I just wanted to welcome him to our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I would just ask if we could get a copy of Commissioner Sharp's handout for the record?
Okay. All right. Attorney Varnell?
No announcements.
Okay. Mayor Womp? Okay, just as a reminder from the chair, there will be no meeting on July the 23rd, as this is a five Wednesday month. So on July the 23rd, there will not be a commission meeting. With that, we'll move forward to public session. If anyone from the general public has anything to add, you'll have three minutes, and it begins with your name and address. If we have time ready on the clock. All right, start your name and address, please.
Andrew Jones, 607, District 2. Waiting on an email. I was told this morning, I'll take it as a merit badge, I wanted to talk about rules, I wanted to talk about forgiveness, I wanted to talk about what would Jesus do this morning? But I walked in and was told that my "Future Looks Bright" hat is not allowed in session. I immediately went to the sheriff and asked, hey, what the heck is this about? And then I was told, came from the commission, so rules, let's talk about rules. I know Commissioner Mackey mentioned rules, and there used to be a certain way of things, and this rule was implemented, what's going on with that? I feel like in this country, in this county, in a household, there's not a rule, then all of a sudden, there's a rule. Why are rules implemented? I spent 10 years in the military, I've jumped out of an airplane 34 times, I suited up to jump out of an airplane at least 50, but sometimes wind and other things get in the way of that. I've deployed 11 times. I've commanded the leadership over 40 different Rangers. What is Ranger Regiment? Where did your tax dollars go? Maybe you could take your ego away from you, and maybe I'm visibly shaking because I'm just so fired up that you don't want to let me wear this "The Future Looks Bright" hat. So I have a rule in front of me, but what is my experience with rules? Usually, rules happen because someone died. I have a whole tattoo of dead people on my arm that I knew personally. The amount of veterans that have committed suicide compared to the amount of veterans that died just in the GWAT War, what is the GWAT War, the global war on terrorism? Rules happen because people want to stop something from happening. What are you trying to stop? Trying to do right? You trying to do good? You trying, what are we doing up here, guys? We just going to talk to people that are giving money and want to bring in $3 billion, $5 billion worth of Plan Hamilton? You don't want people to wear a freaking hat that says "The Future Looks Bright"? That was implemented as of this morning? I'll take it as a merit badge, gentlemen, and I'm going to dedicate my life to fixing this country, starting with this county and the city of Chattanooga. I got nothing but time. Have a great day. I forgive you, if you want to talk, I'd be happy to talk with anybody. The decisions you've made in the past are forgiven, they were already forgiven by Christ, if you believe in that. What would Jesus do? We need to reduce the rules, implement the ones that we need to implement, and stop doing these cookie cutter, this person from.
Mr. Jones, thank you so much for your service. Thank you for your service for our community. Mr. Jones, thank you so much for your service. Thank you for your service for the community.
Okay. Anyone else in the public, any other business? Okay. With that, no other business. We'll adjourn until July the 16th at 9:30, begin our committee meetings. Mr. Chauncey?
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk, please start with 725.